To the Committee of the Whole, Osceas Town Council, Monday, February the 3rd, 0900 in council chambers. The first to deal with would be the agenda. Is there any late items coming forward for the agenda? Hearing none, we will look at the agenda by consensus. Moving into the business part of the meeting, first item up would be delegations, or moving into the delegations part of the meeting. First item would be delegations, and we have Denise Eastlake from the Osceas Desert Society giving us an overview on their wonderful year.
And thanks so much again for having us here. It's always great to do a presentation for a committee of the whole. And there were a couple of board members I know who wanted to come today. Quite a few members of our board are out of town right now. They're off traveling, warmer places. And then there were a couple others who wanted to be here, but unfortunately couldn't make it. So apologies on that. You're just with me today. And I'll make this short and sweet because I know I've been doing presentations for a number of years now. I do try and change it up every year, so do a different slant. So this year, again, I wanted to go over our highlights of the past year, but I also wanted to kind of frame it in terms of the impact that we're having on the community. So that's kind of how I'm framing our projects and programs over the last year. I'll also give you an update on how we're doing as an organization, how the society is moving forward, and upcoming plans in the year ahead. So as always, our projects and programs are determined by our mission, which is to conserve and restore the antelope fresh ecosystem of the South Okanagan, and also to educate the public and inspire active concern for the environment. So it's very much to be, to involve people so that they're making a difference is a big part of our mission. And I think a lot of times, people look at our organization, and they may think that our impact is limited to wildlife and ecosystems. And I guess that's one thing I really wanted to stress and raise awareness, is that our impact extends well beyond wildlife and ecosystems. And that's kind of what I'll be addressing in the rest of the presentation. So in terms of what we've been doing, you've seen this slide up before. We've done free school tours for local community schools. This is our fifth year in partnership with Fortis BC. So I know you've seen this before, but it is a real community benefit, obviously. It gives a real, unique experience to the local students, but also really importantly, it gives a free field trip to local schools. And local schools are really struggling with budgets, so to be able to offer them a free program is a real benefit to the community. We also offered a winter program series in 2013, and it was, attendance-wise, I believe it set a record. It was our best-attended winter program series ever. We did four programs, which attracted 250 people, which was a real step forward for us. Obviously, in terms of community benefit, it's great that we can offer social opportunities to the community, kind of add to the overall events provided in the community, and also provide education and information to people, residents. And this lecture series, we actually had people coming down from Kelowna. So the reach extended well beyond Osceas, which was really nice. Desert Center programs are obviously a big part of what we do education-wise. Again, this year, our attendance has been holding really, really steady despite economic kind of ups and downs. So we attracted about 8,000 people again this year. So obviously, again, that's a big benefit to the community. We add to the number of options that tourists and residents can do, and help promote tourism in the community, help promote Osceas. Educational resources, we really, really beefed up our resource section in our website this year, so that when people are looking for something that they can do with wildlife or habitat, if they've got a question about bears, about spade foots, about different animals, if they want to build a bat house, build a bluebird house, all those types of resources are on our website. I also wanted to thank the town, because one of the big things we got on the website this year was a virtual tour of the Desert Center. And really greatly appreciate the support we got from the town in making that possible. That was huge. And the virtual tour, the company did an amazing job. So that was a real addition to the website. And again, helps promote Osceas, having a really strong website. Couple of the grant projects we did this year. We did a wildlife monitoring project. We needed baseline data on what wildlife is at the Desert Center. We do monitor our species, and we keep a binder and record the species we see. However, a lot of the species here are nocturnal, so we're making some assumptions, because we're not out a lot at night. So it was really valuable to have the cameras set up. We set up a couple of wildlife cameras, got some great footage, and a couple of surprises. And none of us sighted bears all summer long, but they were there. We got them on the camera. We also captured or got a raccoon on the camera, and that has never been sighted. Didn't know they were at the center at all. And then we got some typical, this wasn't, this deer, actually, the better shots were about two frames later, because he walked right up to the camera and did a number of modeling poses for us. So you can see he's looking right at the camera, but yeah, he was great looking for the camera. But again, it wasn't part of what we built into that grant, was not only the monitoring, which was incredible value for us in terms of an environmental, where we can take that data, because we want to build on this grant in future years, and continue to do more monitoring. It particularly has relevance in terms of climate change, seeing what species over time may be impacted as climate changes. So obviously, from an environmental standpoint, very important. But we also built in a community component to this grant, and that is wildlife bookmarks. We did a series of bookmarks that serve as checklists that we can distribute to the public. So it's kind of, it's kind of interesting. It has a fact on the front side, and then on the back side is an actual checklist. So they can take it home, the public can take it home, and/or use it at the Desert Center. It's just kind of a helpful tool for what wildlife is in the area. But we very much wanted to build in a kind of a community or a public benefit to this grant as well. We're also continuing on with the cover crop study in conjunction in partnership with six local vineyards, and the Real Estate Foundation funds that grant. That one has a very strong community impact. What we're trying to develop is a really effective native seed mix that vineyard operators can plant between their vineyard rows. From our standpoint, it provides native habitat for local species. But for the vineyard operator, it's an effective way of controlling dust, reducing erosion, and also attracting beneficial insects, native beneficial insects. There's a study being conducted further up the valley, where that's what they're doing, is the benefits of native insects in vineyards. So there's real synergy there for us to partner down the road with the information they're gathering, to kind of build on the impact of using a native seed mix between your vineyard rows. So we have tested four different seed mixes now, and the next two years are monitoring to see which ones perform the best. Not only do we do research, but we're also a really popular site for universities and other organizations doing research. This is one of the researchers that was onsite this year doing some plant studies. We have had various wildlife studies as well, including information on bees, which I know is a big issue right now, native pollinators, has a big impact on local agriculture. So again, there is a benefit to all that research. It's very much applied research. We also do restoration work parties. We've been doing those annually, ever since I can remember, and we tend to hold about six a year. So we did, most of our focus is at the Desert Center itself, but this year, we did get out and made, tried to do a little bit of impact in the area by Watermark, at least get rid of some of the invasives. There's a section next to Watermark, kind of below California Day, so we tried to tidy that up a bit and at least get rid of the invasives. So again, not only are we focusing on the Desert Center, but we're trying to get out into the community and make an impact. Native landscaping, we continued our partnership with the Osceas Golf Club. So again, community benefit there, as well as maintaining our native plant demonstration garden. So trying to get out in the community, make a difference there. Also, just provide examples of native landscaping and water-wise landscaping, drought-tolerant And then Romancing the Desert. Again, we held Romancing the Desert this past year. We're attracting guests, not only from the local area, but throughout BC, Alberta, Saskatchewan. I got my first email probably two weeks ago, a lady from Vancouver. I think this will be her fourth or fifth year coming. So again, huge value in promoting Osceas. And probably, that has become our biggest reason to do the event now. The fundraising aspect of Romancing has pretty much become the secondary reason for doing the event. The primary reason has been to really raise the profile of the area, of the businesses here, and of the society and the habitat, what we do. So that's kind of what we were up to this past year. In terms of how the society is doing, I did bring year-end financials with me. If I can pass around. And Lori, I'll give you one of these too. I brought two sets of those, so people can take a look. So year-end financials. I guess the bottom line, I'll go straight to the bottom line. We ended with a $210 deficit, which in the big scheme of things is, as Matt would say, our president of the board, he'd say we take our nonprofit designation very seriously. So we pretty much hit the mark this year. In terms of grant funding, we did go after a number of grants, as we always do. We're very active in seeking grants each year for projects. Got some wonderful grant support this year from Fortis, RBC, Real Estate Foundation, BC Gaming, Regional District. Those have been fairly long-term partnerships on all of those. So that's been a real focus of ours as well, is not just getting a grant, but trying to maintain the partnership long-term. And then, we've also been very, very active in fundraising, not just in grants, but in trying to develop other fundraising strategies. And that is, I don't know where they ended up, but they should be circulating. One of the things we did this year was we created some fact sheets. There's a series of three different fact sheets. And this is just a starting point. We want to develop more fact sheets, but these are one of the tools that we wanted to develop, to use in fundraising. And so the three fact sheets that we've got right now are kind of a baseline one about our mission and support, another one about membership, and then another one about sponsorship and donation opportunities. And again, these are just a starting point, but over time, we want to develop more fact sheets to kind of have a complete fundraising package. But we are very active, and we have a fundraising committee that meets routinely to keep us on track with fundraising efforts. Not only are we very proactive in the fundraising, but just in terms of long-range planning, we had an all-day retreat in November, and it was one of the best things I've ever been to. It was just an amazing retreat in terms of actual progress made. And I guess in twofold, not only in looking ahead and in progress made, but the other thing is just really taking a look at what we're doing and reassessing. The society has been around since 1991. The Desert Center has been around since 1998. And I think it's really healthy to take a look at what you're doing and seeing, are you still on track? And is the track that you're on, you know, times change, priorities change, is it time to, you know, make a course correction? And those are all the types of things that we went over and are still continuing. What came out of that meeting were some priorities that we identified moving forward, but also to take a look at our, particularly what we do restoration-wise, and go, where are the greatest needs in the community? And what are other organizations doing? A lot of organizations are very active now in restoration. So we really want to fill niches and voids in what's being done out there. So we have had a number of meetings on the restoration front, just to determine, do we need to kind of shift a little bit going forward? And also, I think the last line is important. We want to make sure that we always maximize our effectiveness. We're a small organization, so it's really important that what resources we have, we use them extremely wisely. So looking ahead, got a number of big projects. One of the biggest that we'll be doing this year, and we're partway through it already, is, I had mentioned that we had a long-term partnership with Fortis BC. One of the things that came out of that is a representative from Fortis came to observe one of the school tours in June, and she was so impressed and had such an amazing time that she said, "What else do you need money for?" And so we said, "We're working on redoing all the interpretive signage, site-wide," which is a massive project. It's like 15, 16 signs. We had made a start on it, but we still had about eight or nine signs to do, and I think within weeks, we had an $8,000 check from Fortis to do eight or nine more signs. So that's a wonderful kind of offshoot of a long-term partnership that was on school tours. So we've got, most of the signs are in the draft stage, and we're hoping to have them all up by spring or summer. And that would be new signage on the entire site. Another project that we're working on, and Barry has probably seen more of me than he would like to, is we got $5,000 from RBC Blue Water Foundation, and we would like to partner with the town on doing native landscaping and water-wise plants at a town property. And I don't know that if that decision has been made on what sites may be potential, but the society would certainly like to partner with the town on doing some seerscaping and water-wise landscaping on primarily native plants to beautify a town site. So that would be in the coming year. And then the last one is, which I think I touched on this last year as well, we are doing the preliminary work of starting to work on a new building at the Desert Center. The trailers that are at the site now were used when the Desert Center started, those trailers were used, and they've certainly served their life. So it's, you know, it's not going to be a year procedure, it's long-term. But we did get someone to do some preliminary design and sketches for us, so that we can create a fact sheet. Another one of the fact sheets will be totally on the building plans, and, you know, start moving forward on a fundraising strategy and how we're going to move forward on a building. But at this point, it's not, it's just a practical necessity. It's not that we're, you know, have any illusions or anything. It's just practically, we have to replace those buildings. They're well beyond their lifespan. So every year, we're just hoping to make headway on that as we move forward, and hopefully within five years or so. And in terms of our supporters, this is touched on in one of those fact sheets. Can't say enough about our volunteers. On any given year, we have between 50 and 60 volunteers that help out with different things with society, big, big part of who we are. Community, too, can't say enough about the community support we get, particularly with Romancing. I think it tops over 100 different businesses support us just for that one event. So just so appreciative of the community's support. Again, our grant funders obviously enable us to do projects that otherwise wouldn't be possible. And then again, our partnership with the town is huge. These last few years where we've had, you know, particularly when we shifted to line item, just a tremendous difference in what we can accomplish. So that partnership is extremely important, and I can't say how much we appreciate it. It's just very valuable to the society, so a huge thank you to the town. In terms of our requests this year, we would certainly appreciate it if the town was able to do the $15,000 line item again. I believe it's, well, it's been for the past two years, same as 2013 and 2012 as well. We've had the $15,000, and makes a huge difference. Again, would love to partner on that RBC project with something that works well for the town, and then continue for ways to work together. If there's other opportunities, we certainly hope you think of the Desert Society. If there's, you know, the things that we can do to support what the town is doing, and that are a benefit to the community, we'd very much like to partner on other projects as well. So I did pass out the list of board and staff of our 2013 funders and the financial reports. If there's any other information that you would like, please don't hesitate to ask me. And obviously, if you have any questions, happy to answer any questions that you may have. And again, our sincere thanks on behalf of all those volunteers, all the community supporters, the board, staff, thank you for your support. It really makes a difference.
Thanks, Denise. It's really great to have this report and your kind words also, and your good financials coming forward. A lot of time with our, with our small community groups and towns, it's hard for us to, it's hard to get the right financials matching up. And this looks, this looks really good, as it has in the past, and something that we can understand and go, okay, here's what's really happening out there. Congratulations for a great year from your board, to your board, I'm looking at your board, and there's just some great people there that are guiding the organization. So before I, and I just happen to be a real big booster of the Desert Society. So before, I have a few questions, but I'm going to turn it over to council first and let them have a kick at it. Council McCordough.
Thank you.
I'll let, we'll just go around in a circle.
Thank you very much, Denise. It was, it's always an interesting report and great pictures. I was at Romancing this year, and it was, it's a great event as usual. I'm just wondering, one of the things that concerned me was the walkways, and I know that the raised walkways have some of the wood on there, obviously needs replacing, and I've seen that you've done that. I'm assuming you have that built into the budget to do that type of repair work, along with the building, I know that.
We do the under-site maintenance and site upgrades. We do put some money in the budget every year to repair the, kind of the safety issues, anything that's raised or rotting, so absolutely. We've also sought grants on that. A couple of years ago, the Community Infrastructure Grant came out, and we did put in an application for that. It is mind-boggling what the replacement of that boardwalk. We put in for a quarter of the boardwalk, and it's about $250,000 for a quarter of the boardwalk. So that's a million-dollar boardwalk.
Is, one of the problems I would think might be the golf carts that go up and down there, and I'm sure that doesn't do any, it doesn't do any good for some of those boards that are probably a little bit, I don't know how else you could do it with Romancing, but you don't normally have motorized vehicles on that.
No.
Okay, so just the ones a year.
Yeah, and one year, we did try and do Romancing without the golf carts.
Lot of running?
It was a bit problematic, so yeah, you're absolutely right, Romancing.
And thank you for answering the question about the volunteers. I was going to ask about that, how many you had, and 50 to 60. I know some of my neighbors do it, and they love it, so obviously, it's a great place to work. Thank you.
Council Rhodes.
Well, thanks, Denise. Always nice to see you every year, and real happy about the numbers. Package looks really good, and thank you very much for holding this whole thing together for us every year. Compliments on the education aspect of it. I hear all the time from people that have attended some of the things that you've had, and they've come away with knowledge that they didn't have when they started there, and everybody speaks very favorably about it. Just a quick word about the volunteers. What a tremendous thing to gather that many together. And the underlying thing that I hear from the volunteers that work out there is they do it because they really like it, you know. So, you know, lots of people volunteer just because a job needs to be done, but most of them up there are very happy to do it, and feel good, and feel that they're adding something to the community. I do have one question, and only I would ask this one. How are we doing with the odor control from across the way, from the ponds? Are any more complaints or anything about it?
No, the last few years, you know, every once in a while, you get, you know, you get...
A moment.
Yes, a moment. But by and large, the last couple of years, it's been much better.
Yeah, it does seem like it's better.
Yeah, because I remember a few years ago, we would actually see people take two paces outside their car and turn around and go right back in. And like I said, occasionally, you know, the wind is right, and there was an unfortunate timing of a delivery, but by and large, it's much better.
Good to hear. Thanks.
Council Blunt.
No, I'm good, actually. Diddles. Everything's been great. I actually...
Have this mic on. But for me, Romancing the Desert, every year, we try to get involved as well, myself, and I've heard, everything is so positive about that event and everything that happens with it, so congratulations on another successful year, and look forward to this year again.
Wow, I appreciate your support very, very much.
Yeah, Denise, always nice to have you here, and thank you for this presentation. I have several questions, and perhaps if, since Council Blunt didn't ask one, maybe I can have his. I get two at least on the first round. The first one is something that I know, I think I brought up in the past, the idea of a, sort of a joint cooperative path to the Inca Meeep Center, the museum, and the Desert Center. Have you had any opportunities to pursue any kind of cooperative sale of admissions with some of the others?
We have done cross-promotion with Inca Meeep, where people, we gave discounts to people who were coming from Inca Meeep and vice versa. And I think this spring, we need to get the three of us together and revisit that, get the museum involved as well, and I know they did a... And I know they did it before my time, they did a passport one year.
Yeah, good. That's good. The, the research that's done there, how available is that after, you know, after it's been done? I know that sometimes the students do it or people write papers for learning journals, but how available is that to the public?
You know, interesting, that, that is, has been one of my concerns and one of the concerns that was raised as we were meeting the Restoration Committee. It's really nice to do the research, but if you don't get the information out, you know, that's a, that's an essential piece and that's a piece that we want to get better on. So certainly you can get the student papers out on the website, things like that. But we're looking for ways to do a better job of disseminating the, the information once a report is done. That's going to be particularly critical on that, the Vineyard Study. Because if there's an effective seed mix that does, you know, that when it gets created and initial results are looking really positive, we do need to focus on that, on getting the word out. So that is something, totally agree with you, that we're really taking a look at, how can we do that in a bigger way?
Good. Well, yeah, that's good. Yeah, I, I can see that, you know, that would merit, you know, kind of a press, press conference or press release or some, you know, a little bit of...
Yeah.
Of excitement locally.
Yeah.
When things like that are, when some results are, are available. Good, thank you.
Mr. Romanek?
Yeah, just, just wrapping it up and just, just a great job you're doing. I get so excited about it. Real, real booster and proponent and going back to when I was on the executive and you talk about the trailers, I'm going, yeah. I think we bought some out of, yeah, it just goes back forever. But really, really strong efforts and I, I like your, your, your bind, your bounding with the, with the town. That's, that's, that's really important for us. And I, I like the, that the, the virtual tour came out so positive.
Really good.
That was a, that was a neat little exercise in itself and the museum and that. When you were talking about your signs, have we got, when I look at signs in the community and, and your informational signs and educational signs and, and other signs, being in a desert, we get so beat up by the sun's UV. Is there anything out there? Are we getting, are we getting ahead of that curve where we can beat the sun from beating up our signs? I look at the, I look at the four murals on the side of Holm Hardware. And unfortunately, I think they're, I think they're done. And if you have a close look at them, they're just all fissured and fractured and cracked. It would really be nice if there's anything, do we have any knowledge, are we getting better on protecting these signage that costs a lot of money? And it sure would be nice if we were getting more years out of them.
That's actually, we worked with Magphey Productions, designer out of Kelowna for that reason, so that kind of they could do the, the research. They came up, like the best option that they felt they could find for us was a, it's a UV protected sign. I don't think they'll last, you know, they're not going to last forever or, I think you're going to continually have to budget replacement. But that was kind of the best that she could come up with. There's another one and I forget what she called it, where the image is almost sitting behind, shoot, what was it called? The image almost sits behind a protective covering, but you get a little bit of a, it looks slightly out of focus.
Okay.
And so we decided that would probably have better long-term durability, but it wasn't, wasn't as sharply focused. I think if you see a sign like that, you'll know, and there's a special name for it, but you can kind of tell because it just seems a little bit hazy. It's almost like having wax paper or something.
Okay.
A little bit. But they are UV coated. And the ones that we, we've done, done three so far. And I'll go out in winter to see how they're holding up and so far, so good. That's part of it, too. They not only take a beating in the summer with the sun, but they take a beating in winter too, so. But so far, so good. The ones that she, she recommended have been working well.
Great. Well, certainly your timing is perfect. We're heading into final budget deliberations here in the next couple of weeks and our, our next delegation is all about budget. So your timing is wonderful. Thank you for the presentation.
Okay. And again, thank you so much for, for the time and also for all the support. We really appreciate it.
For Granicus, the question was, why does everything always cost so much money? I was on that board when, when that boardwalk went in and I think it was, I think we were looking at a million dollars then and all I can say is, they sure did it well to withstand the, that same open hog and sun heat and drying boards and to get those number of, those number of feet walking over that boardwalk for ninety-eight, you know, over fifteen, sixteen years. So that's, that's pretty good feat in itself. Delegation number two, Sandy Croto, Finance Manager of Regional District, giving us an overview of the Regional District budget of which the town of Osiris pays approximately nine point, nine and a half percent or nine and a third percent, somewhere, somewhere in there. I like to round it out that, that we're sort of a, a ten percent payer overall.
Overall.
Yeah.
All right. Good morning. Thank you for giving me the time just to come and, and talk with you. I just wanted to give a quick overview of the Regional District budget process overall, we, how our process works and where we're at in that process. And then I would speak more directly to the requisition for the, for the area of Osiris, for town of Osiris. And finally, just a quick update on the Regional Hospital Board District budget as well, because we're in the middle of that as well. So for the Regional District, we are actually a collection of services. We have just a hundred and thirty-five separate services. They are run as separate budgets. We have to maintain all of our financial records, anything involved with a service independent of every other service, so we don't have a budget. We have a hundred and thirty-five budgets. And only the people who are involved in that service pay for that service. So it varies depending on which area you are talking to, which municipality you're talking to. And sometimes even with, within, individuals within those municipalities are more specifically within the electoral areas. We begin with a baseline budget, which means we basically bring over the previous year's budget with only inflationary or contract increases. That's what our, our board, I mean, our managers start with and that's what they bring to the board is that, that baseline budget. Separate from that, they have to, the managers, if they want to change anything, how we deliver a service, how things are done within the Regional District, if they want to change the way we manage a service, how we, the service level we provide, they have to bring a forward program change request at budget time. So it's not automatically included in the budget. It's dealt with separate from the previous year's status quo budget. And the board basically, excuse me, reviews each of those program change requests and in essence has to buy into that. It has to be bought in and put into the budget for the upcoming year. So it's, each major change is reviewed individually by the board. We have outside service providers and contracts incorporated into the budget. With those, the services often have little time, little room to mitigate because they, the service provider is providing us with the, the numbers that have to go into our budget. For our timelines, we must adopt our budget by March thirty-first of this year for 2014 budget. We started, I said, the budget process back in the fall with our departments. They put together their, their various budgets and we brought those to three separate workshops so far for the, for the board. We started in late November, had a couple in, through December, and then we got first reading of the budget on December nineteenth. That first reading of the budget was the draft document we are now bringing out to the municipalities and to electoral areas for, for consultation. And it will remain in this draft form until probably early March would be, would, when we'd be hoping to have a final reading of the budget, but normally that takes place closer to the end of March by the time we get through the mall. We have just had first reading of the hospital budget last week. January twenty-third was the first reading of the hospital budget. And I do have a brief update on that as well within this budget presentation. And as I said, we hope to have third reading and adoption by March sixth, but alternately that would be March twentieth so we can make, if we don't make the March sixth deadline so that we can still have a budget approved by March thirty-first. So some partnerships and projects. Joint Services with Area A, Osiris shares the arena costs as well as the museum property debt servicing costs. For the region overall, the biggest project that we have ongoing is the nine-one-one infrastructure project. It was in the 2013 budget, but has just got underway. Was very little spent in the 2013 budget and the majority of that, of the one-point-six million dollar project is rolling forward into 2014. It is expected the project will be completed in 2014, so the effects of that, of the debt that will be required for that project will not be included into the budgets until 2015 as the debt servicing starts to be, to happen after that. So a quick look at the expenditures for the, for the Regional District overall. Our, our true operating expenses are up about a hundred thousand dollars from last year. We had twenty-seven point six million in operating expenses versus twenty-seven point seven million estimated for this year at this point. The municipal debt payments are down. That's the servicing of debts by, by the various municipalities, just some of the larger debts are coming off the table for different municipalities. Capital expenditures, it's a large change in that budget only because of some large projects that completed in 2013. The major projects that are ongoing for 2014, as I said, is the one-point-six million for the nine-one-one infrastructure project and a couple of larger ones for some of the sewer and water projects. Within that five-point-six million, there's about one-point-two million for the recreation landfills and fire departments combined. For the, for the, for Osiris, the arena capital budget is about seventy thousand dollars in that, in those total numbers. And the Regional Health District budget, the expenditures are down from eight-point-three million to seven-point-five, but the requisition amount is up slightly at a hundred thousand dollars. And that's in relation to building reserves as we move forward into the, to the Patient Care Tower in Penticton, which I'll get into more in a minute. So factors affecting the 2014 budget is assessment mix as always. Osiris assessments are down from last year by about two-point-one-six percent. That affects their share of the regional services costs. It will shift the, the mixture of, of the requisition needed will change between the participants as the assessments change. It also affects the, the share of the requisitions with Area A for those services that are shared. Although Osiris is down, Area A's assessment is down more. So Area A's assessment is down four, four-point-five-six percent versus the two-point-one-nine for Osiris. So for some of those shared services, a larger portion of the requisition needed to support those will be shifting to Osiris from Area A because of those, that movement within the, the assessment base. The museum debt servicing, the budget numbers, it shows, it looks like it's being affected because it looks like there's a decrease in the, in the museum debt servicing numbers, but that's just a correction of budget numbers from 2013. The 2013 budget numbers were an estimate of what the long-term debt would actually be, but now that it's been, because it was sitting in short-term debt when the 2013 budget was done, now that it's into long-term debt, we know the exact numbers. So the budget number has actually come down about ten thousand dollars in relation to that. No change other than just a correction in budget numbers as we move through there. Some other items that are not specifically just for Osiris, but are going to impact the region as a whole is the Campbell Mountain landfill fee structures. We are estimating, building into our budget at this point, a large increase in the Campbell Mountain landfill fees because of continued deficits in that service. Deficits in the neighborhood of about four hundred thousand dollars for the last two or three years. So it's estimated that the Campbell Mountain landfill fees would go up from about seventy-two dollars per tonne for the tipping fee to, were, have built into the budget at this point, ninety-five dollars per tonne. And one of the regional services, the Solid Waste Management Plan, has a significant increase in its requisition this year because of the introduction of the compost sighting project. The requisition overall is up just over eighty thousand dollars for that service, but because it is a regional service that gets spread over a large, large area or a large assessment base. So the increase for the Osiris is about six and a half, six thousand five hundred, six thousand six hundred or so. So the, the compost sighting plan has been in the works as part of the Solid Waste Management Plan for some time now. And there's seventy thousand dollars of expenditures in the budget this year for, for the, for the Solid Waste Management Plan compost sighting and it's expected to be fifty thousand in the next two years following that. The, the requisition total for com, for compost sighting and for this, for solid waste management for this year is about a hundred and forty thousand versus sixty thousand previous year. And it's expected on a go-forward basis as we move through some of the major projects in the Solid Waste Management Plan, that that will balance out around probably about a hundred thousand dollars annually for those, for that service. So just moving on to looking at Osiris's requisition overall. As you can see, for the total requisition, we are up twenty thousand dollars from the previous year. That's the second line from the bottom there. For the Solid Waste Management Plan, as I mentioned, oh, six thousand eight hundred, I was off a couple. There, there's an increase there. There are some increases and decreases throughout the regional services. You'll see some are up and some are down. Regional Trails, for example, is down. There's no change in the proposed service delivery of that service, but there are some provincial monies that are being brought into the budget that we were received in previous years and now being utilized into the budget. So no real change in the service delivery, just a change in other revenue sources that we're able to utilize for that service at this point. As I mentioned, the change in assessments is affecting Osiris's share of the regional services. If there had been no change in, in assessment values, we would expect that the, that total regional service increase would have been about four thousand dollars higher than it is right now. So that change in assessment has, has moved about four thousand dollars of the regional service costs and redistributed it between the participants. Shared services for the arena, you can see, is up seventeen thousand dollars. The, the major change that we see from the Osiris Sunball Arena numbers that we've received is that, is basically a loss of prior year surplus from, from the previous year. In previous years, there was a surplus. We're not seeing one coming into that play this year, so that's a revenue source gone there. And then just some slight increases in various expenditure lines as well to get us to that, to the increase that we're seeing. For the other services that Osiris partners in is such as the sterile insect release program and the Okanagan Basin Water Board. Both of those budgets are pretty much flat this year. We're not seeing a, a lot of change within those budgets, but you'll see the amount requisition from Osiris is down in relation to those. That's because the Regional District as a whole, our share of those projects or those programs is down because of, again, assessment changes not only within our region, but between us and other regions and other areas. So there's a slight decrease in the requisition required to service that at this time. And as I mentioned, the, the museum property tax, museum property debt is serviced by parcel tax and we're seeing a decrease there and that's really just a correction in the budget numbers from 2013 to 2014 as we have a, a more accurate number for debt going forward. So what does that look like overall? Well, when we break it out, you can see that the, the largest portion of the requisition goes towards supporting the arena, that's just under fifty percent, at forty-eight-point-six percent. Sixteen point seven, sixteen-point-seven percent is going to SIR and OBWP. Solid Waste Management Plan is just under two percent. Protective Services, that's nine-one-one and emergency planning in those ones is eight-point-six. General Government, that's the administrative running of the Regional District, so the, the maintaining of the office within the, within Penticton and items related to staffing, equipment, all of those things, which all of the partners within the Regional Districts contribute to. That would be all the municipalities. That would be all the municipalities and all the electoral areas. And then, of course, just some of the smaller items such as pest control, regional trails, and regional growth together is just under two percent for those three combined. So just from that, I should mention too, from the amount, that total requisition amount that we were talking, I showed you on a couple of slides back, at the six-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars, what does that actually look like to each household? When we work it out on a mill rate basis, we're looking at for the average household at about a hundred and sixty-four dollars for the, the services that SOUYS is contributing to, that goes to the regional district. Quick, moving on to the regional hospital district. The hospital district board is, main mandate is to provide capital funding for healthcare facilities in the region. That includes equipment, any of the buildings, any of the restoration, renovations of buildings or new buildings. And our normal portion of those, the information regarding those items comes from interior health. They provide us with what they require for capital, and the board gets a listing each year of what those requests are and approves those during the budget process. And our portion of any of those capital items for the regional health district is for, hospital district, is forty percent of what the total IHA costs. The hospital district budget for 2014, as I mentioned, is down. The expenditures are down from eight-point-two million to seven-point-five million, but the requisition line is up by about a hundred and thirty-five thousand. The hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar increase is a direct offset to amounts going into reserve. So we are continuing to build reserves for the hospital district in anticipation of the Penticton Regional Hospital expansion, the patient care tower expansion. So any monies that, over the years, that we have found in the budget or, or saved in the budget, as mostly from debt being retired from other projects in the past, has been going into reserves, and slowly the requisition has been, if it's increasing at all, it's usually directly for that offset to go, more money into the reserves. So for the hospital district budget this year, it was estimated to be about twenty-two-point-two-eight-nine-eight mill rate for SOUYS. I should say for, well, it's for SOUYS, it's for everyone in the region because it's a regional service. And that's a real quick overview. I just wanted to be able to put these numbers out there for you and answer any questions you might have, and hope that if anyone has any questions, they will contact us with feedback as we go along.
Okay, I'm sure we, we may have some questions. I know I do for today. Thanks, Ms. Croto. Counsel, please. Any, any, any questions? Counselor Rhodes, please.
Thanks. Well, welcome to SOUYS. I know you're here a couple of weeks ago and did a bit of an open house, and, and I've been sitting next to you and at the regional district board through some of the budget stuff, and you've been doing a great job.
Thank you.
You've made things very understandable. I wanted to go back to the Campbell Mountain landfill and the, the four-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit that it's reporting. That's, that's a chronic situation, is it not? It's been going on for a while, and I'm very concerned about solving that problem there by increasing fees and, and all of the other things that go along with it. A lot of people think, well, what, what has that got to do with us and SOUYS? Well, you know, we have a, we own our own landfill, and, you know, I think we show a bit of a profit there every year, and we're pretty proud of how we changed that around from what it used to be to what it is now. And, you know, landfill shopping is, is huge for us here. You know, we're not out looking for business, and, and when something happens in another area that's going to affect that kind of thing, and, you know, and I know I'm ranting a little bit, but a lot of people don't understand the complexity of filling up a landfill and having to go look for another one. It's something that's not achievable in our community. Is, is the raising up of the fees at the Campbell Mountain landfill going to solve the problem, and is it the cause of the problem? Just wondering if you could comment on that.
Yeah. It's anticipated that the raising of the fees will, will solve the deficit problem as, as the numbers bear out in that we keep seeing less and less into the landfill, which is a good thing, but those, as those, as those volumes go down, the, the cost has to go up to, to maintain that number. Is it going to solve the problem? That's, that's our, our hope and our intent, but I think it's going to take more discussions and more deliberations with the board. There are, as I, the fees are in the budget built in to be increasing, but the fees and charges by law has not come before the board yet. Comes this week, this February sixth meeting. So I'm sure there'll be much more discussion at that point at the, the most appropriate way to deal with that deficit and to try and to mitigate it in the future. So we're still working on it, is what I can say.
Thanks. Anything else? I, I've got a couple of questions, Ms. Croto, and I guess it comes down to assessment, and SOUYS being assessed probably the highest in the area. I know we are assessed the highest, highest, we have the highest assessment in the Okanagan Regional Library. So when we're looking at all our services, like the, the hospital, the hospital service and assess, and the financials there, we are paying just on assessment. Is that correct?
Yeah.
There's no, there's no population.
No.
No, so, and this is all provincial government, so as that lays is, is how, is how we are assessed. So we're the highest, I know, at the Okanagan, Okanagan Regional Library Board. They do have what I consider a fairness component in there, and they assess, assess us on assessment and population. So we're just playing by the straight assessment rules by DC government, and when I'm looking at municipal versus rural, and we have a farmer's dwelling in municipal, fully taxable for general and fully taxable for school and other. If I move to rural, I see that, that building is a hundred percent exempt from that assessment. So these are the rules that, that we're, that we're operating under.
Right. Those are BC assessment rules. They, we, we provide BC assessment with the requisition amounts we need, and they apply their, they, they produce the tax notices and the, and the rates and exemptions involved with that as it moves through, so.
Because I'm, I'm knowing, knowing in the, basically in the Okanagan Valley, it's quite whining about the high assessments that, that our pay structure is based on. And I whine and I whine. People are offering me loaves of bread. I whine so much, but there's, there's, there's nothing that we can do to, to change that. That's, that's the result of, of the current value of the properties in SOUYS.
Correct.
Lake Shore properties and all that coming into, into that mix, that's, that's the way it is.
Yes. Depending on, well, the service, service establishment for each of our services just determines what the assessment values, or what, what will be involved in the assessment. It could be land and val, and buildings, or it can be just land, or it can be just buildings, but that's established in the assessment, in the establishment bylaws. But yeah, moving forward from that and how it bears out in comparison to other areas and the assessments for one versus the other, it's just, that's the way the game's played. That's the, the rules that we have to live by.
Okay. And when I was, there was some numbers that, that came out, and I, I guess I picked the numbers up on Oliver Daily News, and they were numbers that were brought forward in the regional hospital district meeting, and it didn't appear like they were in-camera numbers. They were, that was public information numbers. And when I was looking at the assessment for SOUYS and Area A, SOUYS and Area, SOUYS itself was going to pay more than Oliver and Area C combined. We were going to pay more dollars, yet there was fifteen-hundred-and-seventy less people in SOUYS than Oliver A and Oliver, Oliver and C combined, and we were paying, as I say, more money at sixteen-hundred less people for hospital services. And I guess this is part of my whine. Am I just whining in the wind?
Well, unfortunately, population does not play into our, our numbers at all. Unfortunately, like I said, it's strictly an assessment-based system, so the, the number of people who have that much value in the properties is, is irrelevant in the calculations.
Well, thank you for understanding what I'm saying to start with. And because, you know, when we look at those assessments, when we look at those assessments for the town, they, they reflect not just the people that own Lake Shore property, but they own, they reflect the, what that young family of four is paying for rent and in the accommodation that they're trying to rent somewhere in town, because those, those figures and those taxes and those assessments, they, they're, they're a part of the rent structure that the landlord is charging. So, so it really, really reflects the whole town, and I just see a bit of an inherent unfairness there.
Yeah.
From the highest mountain.
The, the only fairness element, I guess you could try to see within an assessment, assessment-based value system that we use that, that's applied throughout taxation is that those with higher assessed values pay more than those with lower assessed values, so that there is a shifting within, within the population or within that owner, owner's structure to try, and the basis of it is a redistribution that those who have more can probably afford to pay more for those. So that's, it's not that it ends up being an equal amount to every person, but, so that's the only upside I can give you.
And that's, and that's been the tradition of Canada since we started taxation policy. So, so I'm just going to, to me, being the, the, the mayor of the town with the highest assessed values, I'm just going that there would appear to be a bit of a leveling model, which if population came into it in some degree, that would, but I mean, this is not in your bailiwick, I mean, I appreciate.
No, I wish I could do that.
Mr. Remankle, please.
Just a quick question for clarity. Whose decision is it on the, on the method of charging? Who established the fact that it would be an assessment-based process versus other? Does that sit with the school board, a school board, with the hospital board, with the regional district, or with the province?
I honestly don't know the answer to that. I would have to check.
Yeah, because if, if there is potential for counsel to approach a local body or a regional body, the, the Regional Library Board, apparently, well, that's in, that's in provincial legislation, that they use both a, a population and an assessment base. So there may be something that counsel may want to approach in terms of the, the actual decision-makers on who sets that, that, that particular method of charging.
I think we'd like to know that. Maybe, maybe through, through this, we can just charge our staff to let us, let us, to find out who, who does set the, the collection criteria.
Because I don't know.
Okay, okay. Sorry. Counselor Ryan, please.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would, I would hope that it's in the, the provincial legislation regarding RDOS and, and regional districts, but I think it's a good question. I, I just want to look at the 2014 requisitions for the town of SOUYS and just ask you a couple of questions. Solid Waste Management, the twelve, twelve thousand three seventy, what is that for, and what, what are we actually getting for that?
Solid Waste Management? Again, the Solid Waste Management Plan is a regional program that sets out, well, sets out the, the plan for, for managing solid waste within the region. And as I said, this year, what the driver and the major project within there is the compost, landfill compost sighting project. So that's going to be working towards finding a site for that landfill composting, and that's a three-year project that's going to be going down the line. What does SOUYS get in particular? They're just a partner within that, within that, that program to try and find those, the solutions for the, for the region solid, solid waste program.
I know that's been going on for some time. Are we any closer to finding a site than, than we were last year?
I don't know the answer to that. Like, I, last year was, it was in the works, but it was not the major project. This is bringing it into the, to the major project for 2014, so I imagine we'll see much more progress on that this year because this is the, the focus of their, their work plan for 2014 is, is over the next three years, but this is the start of it, and this is their major move forward on it. So I would hope that this year we'll see a better answer to that.
Yeah, because a number of us are holding our breath waiting for the composting to start for, for a household, for food waste. On the regional trails, sixty-seven-ten, does that include us paying for the Penticton Indian Bands Channel Trail?
That is where the money for that is, is located, is within that service, yes.
So how, how, what's the justification for that?
As in, because it's part of that regional trail system. It's considered part of our, our regional trail strategy that they have that they've mapped out. So that trail in particular is part of that larger regional trail picture, so that's why it's being housed within the regional trail service. It's the service that we have that can, can accommodate that type of work, and that is, is seen to be benefiting for the entire region because of its connectivity within the other trails that we're going to be using, so.
And yet, if I started to walk from here, I wouldn't be able to take trails all the way up there, could I?
No, but that's eventually, the, the regional trails is, that's their ultimate goal, is to have, to have connectivity throughout the entire region of trails, so that's not going to happen overnight for sure, but that, that is the, the purpose of the regional trails service, and the reason that service was established with all the partners being involved, because it is anticipated that we would like to see those kind of connections throughout the valley, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Ryan, Ryan, for bringing, bringing up that contentious issue one more time. And the, the few communities that voted against it, I think maybe a couple in the Smilkemean and for sure Oliver and us and, and the areas, we got defeated at the vote. Ms., CAO Remankle.
Yeah, if I could just clarify on the waste management, the process that's occurring right now is a consultant has been hired, and they're going and making an, an assessment on each landfill in the regional district area, including ours, to see what the appropriateness of the site is for our regional composting centers. So that's, that's where the, the majority of the money is being spent, and our, our facility is, is being assessed within that, within that process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from counsel hearing on? Thank you very much, Ms. Croto. That was great information, great presentation. Again, the numbers are, I don't know, there's something going wrong here. The numbers are getting easier to understand. So it must be the presentation.
Thank you.
Next item up, under business, Silga Southern Interior Local Government Association. This is town council's parent, parent body area-wise, calling for resolutions and nominations and a report. Mr. Remankle, are you going to?
Yes, I can, I can speak to it without reading the report. Basically, this came from the last meeting, and it is the call for resolutions and nominations for the board, and at that time, members of council wanted it to be, come back to the committee, the whole, to discuss whether or not there would be any resolutions going forward to the Silga Convention.
Counsel, Counselor Ryan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I, I unfortunately wasn't at the meeting, but I, I know that two things occurred to me about this and in terms of the subject of resolutions. The first is the, the whole question of the invasive species for our lakes, the zebra and the quagga mussels. And I know that there are, you know, there's, there's advertising and so on, but I, I am not aware that there is any, any kind of monitoring or any, any facilities at various lakefront launches to examine or to remove these creatures. So, you know, again, the, you know, border services is a federal responsibility. I appreciate that, but sometimes these, these motions also ask for senior levels of government to, to get involved, you know, in, in other partnership or on their own. But I, I would think that, that this would be the subject, a suitable subject for such a resolution, whether we have it at... have it at, at key lake sites, or whether we have it at the border crossings, you know. But I, I really think that would be one subject that I would put forward for consideration. The second is, is the whole question, and I hope this is not closed, because we were, we were sort of forced into a quick decision on, on RCMP contracts with federal government, is the whole question of the threshold for payment of, local payment for RCMP policing services. I, I always felt that five thousand, in a, in a, in a province like ours, that five thousand is, is a really low number, you know? And I'd like to see it moved up. And I, I, I think that too, you know, to, to move that beyond the five thousand up to a, to a more suitable range, whether it's seventy-five hundred or eight thousand or something like that, would be, you know, a suitable subject for a resolution.
Okay, okay. Counsel?
I say ditto. Sounds good to me.
So, then we would, would you be willing to draft some, draft something, Counselor Ryan? Because it's pretty hard for, for staff to get it exactly as to what you're looking at. Could you draft something and pass it through staff?
I'd be happy to, to work, work with staff on this. You know, I, I think the, you know, I know there's been a lot done and said by the water board about the, the mussels particularly. And there might be some expertise there as to what would be a work, a workable solution. But, but I mean, I'd certainly be happy to get involved, and I, I know that, you know, there was a fair amount said about the, the RCMP contract, but the, the whole question of, of, you know, population didn't seem to factor into that too greatly.
And I don't think we need a lot of, I don't think we need a lot of detail at this point. I think if we put it forward and follow one of the options here, if we put it forward, they're going to do their research on it. Silga does it, or, or they, they team up with UBCM, and they'll, they'll do some of that research, and they sort of tell us whether it's going forward or not. We're just, we're just the starting point and ground floor kicking it forward. So, I'm at OBWB tomorrow. I'll check up the status of local legislation on zebra quagas, and, and when I was on my little holiday in California, that came up. There was communities that they stopped their boat launches, no, no, no transfers, no nothing, because they, they did find the, the species there for the first time. So, it's, it's, I, I think this is going to be like rust. It never sleeps. And these things are just going to keep moving until, until we, we come up with the proper program as Idaho, Montana, Oregon, some of the progressive United States have done. So, we, I'll, I'll do some research, and maybe we can get this kicked off and look at one of these options. Which option is that? Forward a resolution?
We have to have that, I guess.
Well, we'd have to have a.
For the next meeting, so that we can approve it and send it forward. I, I, if you, if you have some information or some people at the water board that would be good to talk to, that would be helpful. And then for the other, I guess, check and see who's, who's on the, you know, in the, in the UBCM, who's been doing the work on that.
Well, through Silga, Silga first. And they'll do, they'll do the research if we go to Silga. So, maybe we just put in something to request a change in the triggering, triggering population.
Yes, okay.
Sort of fairly open and.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Request that we move it upward, or, CEO Remankel?
Yeah, I just, the, I, and I don't know how they handle this at UBCM, but I know the RCMP issue, like, every year, there, there seems to be recurring discussions in around RCMP, the population thresholds, the percentages paid by, and, and these are things that just don't go away, and, and, and they really don't even get any debate, because they become a C or a D level motion. So, although it is a real concern, you know, the, the RCMP project, contracts, and that whole system has been kicked around for years and years and years. And I don't know if we want to move motions ahead. That's, that's the way to do it. You know, and I hate to sound critical about UBCM, but, you know, this has been debated in the five years certainly that I've been at UBCM. But if counsel wishes for us to, you know, provide the energy to put another motion on the table to Silga, we will, we will proceed with that.
I, I, I think we could go as far as Silga, because this is, it's going to, it's pretty basic, what we forward to them. And then, and then they can, they can put their decision together. And then, and then Counselor Ryan or this counsel has said, yeah, let's keep, let's keep looking at, at that triggering number. It's, it's pretty basic at our level, and it shouldn't take a, a ton, a ton of time. Counselor Ryan could probably have that whipped up by Wednesday morning.
Oh, thank you for your confidence.
So, we'll, we'll, we'll deal with this and come back on up. We'll just keep this at a casual basis. Now, it doesn't have to be, well, this isn't a resolution meeting anyway. So, is there anything further on that?
No.
Okay. Looking for the motion to adjourn. Counselor McCordoff, Rhodes, I saw Plon first, but Rhodes, all in favor. Five-minute recess and go and count. Thank you.